A little bit.
Gym? Did you get in that gym?
Yeah, I wanna do it.
Call again on him, so.
Called meeting order. The record reflect all council members present except Mr. Purvis. Moving to our department reports, starting with code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief synopsis of the highlights of our report from February. We've had a total of eight hundred and fifty-five calls in the code department. We had twenty-nine building inspections. Didn't wanna report that. We only have eighty-five people on the building who haven't renewed their business license list at this point in the year. That's the lowest number we've had, not aware of. So, that's going really well. Also, the city marshal removed fifty signs from the roadways and investigated for tampering and theft cases for the utility department. Rest of it, they're, she works up, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer.
Okay, no question, no question for Patrick. Thank you, Patty.
Yes, sir.
Electric telecall, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a total kilowatt hour usage of a little over twelve and a half million kilowatt hours for the city. That came in at a cost of one point one nine million dollars. Top usual was seven hundred and twenty gigs, and a hundred and twenty-two users over two-hundred gigs. Our peak usage still hovering around nine hundred and ten gigs. We are still actively seeking a interlink with Netflix and some other providers inside PTA six Mary Street to bring that overall internet cost down, or basically not to raise our net. And I think that's moving forward fairly well. A couple things went on, and then a couple things got hard on here, but the first thing I wanna talk about is we met with ECG to pick our tree trimmer for the year. It's one of these beakers. They were low bid through ECG's bid process. They were one of three tree services vetted by ECG for the year. And they will start on the twenty-first of this month. Not sure the exact date we'll meet tomorrow to select the primary fees that need to be trimmed. We planted three street trees. If you notice, when we, with our tree ordinance, when we remove trees for either danger or interfere with the lines, we have the ability to replace those. Two of those, one of those, two of those are in front of the office here and one down, and they replaced the three hundred-plus year old loads that we had to take down for safety reasons. We started the design of the new one thirty-eight project. Just to give you a heads up, that project has been delayed because there's an argument between DOT, the contractor, and the signal operator on placement of where one of the signals is placed. When you come off of seventy-eight, home to Charlotte Route, you see those two big poles there for signal lights. One was placed in the wrong place, and they're trying to figure out whose fault it was. As they figure out whose fault it is, that person has to pay for it and be moved. The other two things, we had a issue this weekend, Saturday. As most of you know, we had a power outage on Mayfield Drive. Large pine tree took out the whole north circuit. When it did that, it caused the power, a power fluctuation here at the office, and we had some backup failure. The two pieces of equipment that interrupted, the one that hurt our customers most was the CMTS. CMTS controls the modems. We lost modem service for about four and a half hours. We got that back in place. We got that back in place, and I got home and got a call from Wilmington that they were getting calls about. We got another small power outage. We found the phone system was down. To update you from last month, we have yet to be able to port from Windstream. Windstream had lost or said several of our numbers did not exist, one being the police department, one being Public Works. They had told them, if you call that number, somebody will answer the phone if that number exists. We didn't wanna lose those numbers. So, we delayed the port, and during the delay, we lost a portion of the existing phone system. So, on Sunday, we made very clear to Windstream that we had to do something to get our customers the ability to talk to us on Sunday. They did a, they came up with a solution. It's really not a great solution, but it worked. Customers would call us, and go through the new phone system. We can make sure that all customers needs are met. I have yet to get a fourth day from Windstream after several emails and several phone calls today. And I hope to update you by next Tuesday. Hopefully, it will be forwarded by next Tuesday. But we are operating inside, like sort of day-to-day operations with a few internal issues. But the customers should see no, 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 no delaying in their conversation. Last thing is Viacom. We're still dealing with Viacom on the channels they have. As you know, they wanted eighty-seven percent increase in their fee. Their fee for their channels, programming fee for their channels, was a little over sixteen thousand dollars a month. They wanted to increase that by thirteen thousand dollars a month. Us and the others, seven hundred and ninety-nine independent providers said, no, that's not gonna happen. Negotiations are going forward. We are, I'm getting updates on my phone as we sit here. We can move. Those negotiations will go better than they have. Actually, have gotten better through today. We saw with about a twenty-five to thirty percent increase, which is what we expect. And that's it. No other questions, officer. Thank you.
What stations do you have?
We have MTV, VET, VH1, Comedy Central, and TV Land are the big, the big ones. They have several smaller ones than that, but they, they pretty much demanded an eighty-seven percent for a month or so. And if you look at the ratings of all their channels, the ratings of all their channels are down. And I think standing together with the group at National Cable Co-op, there's five million subscribers, so you're holding fifteen million dollars a month over their head if we all walk away. And several, several small cable providers throughout the country cut them off at midnight. Didn't take the, we took, they gave us an extension, and we took the extension. We didn't want our customers to see an interruption in service. And several companies just cut them off, just said, "We're not gonna stand for this. When you come to the table at this amount, we'll, we'll negotiate." And I, I think it's given us a point. What you have to realize is, you know, we could knuckle it under this eighty-seven percent with this, this provider, but the next one would've just hit us harder. You have to, you have to sort of stand up to them. The big thing you gotta remember is, the majority of the cable bill goes to the provider. It doesn't come to the government. Above that fifty dollars, over, I don't know the exact number, over eighty percent of that goes to the provider. And so, we've, the only way we can keep the cost low is to keep that provider's cost low. And so, we buy them every chance we get.
And let's just make sure everybody understands, when we get an increase, it has to be passed over to every subscriber. So, that's, we're fighting for them to keep their cable bill as low as possible.
Yes, sir.
Also, one other thing on the tree trimming. When y'all get your schedule, do you mind letting the council know?
We'll let the council know. We'll put it on the website. I'll be with Trice, we'll put it on. We're gonna, this year, we're gonna put a magnetic sticker on there to let people know who they are. Last year, we did not do that. That was my mistake. I should've thought of that a little front. And I will give you all a heads up, and I'm sure you will get a call. If you remember, we only had some forty-five minute outages during the ice storm, and it's a lot to do with tree trimming.
I know.
We try to work with each individual customer, but we need that fifteen feet of clearance on that line to keep the power up.
There's a reason they're trimming.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Brian. Okay, thank you, Brian. Finance call.
Thank you, Mayor. Our performance indicators are pretty much tracking as they always have. Nothing remarkable there. And from financials, it's still kinda early in the year, but it's tracking as we're expecting to do as well. I had planned to go over, and I will still go over, and I'll email this to Councilmember Purvis, had to ask about whether or not the extensions were helping. And it's a little bit hard to track and say, well, yes, it's helping, but I do have some figures. We averaged five hundred and thirty-six extensions a month during last year, and we're just now able to tell, because March was our first month, full month, so this is the first that I've been able to tell, a whole year's worth of data. But we've had five hundred and thirty-six extensions averaged a month, around forty defaults a month, and cutoffs, in looking at two thousand fourteen against thirteen, we had eight hundred and thirty-two less cutoffs. So, if it's helping, it may be. The net of the two is around, is two hundred and ninety-six is what it is. So, that we had two hundred and ninety-six less. So, I guess we could say that maybe that was a contributing factor. You know, until we really track it further, it's just speculative whether people are really paying their bills on time, or if this is truly helping. But soon to think that it, that it may be helping, 'cause it's considerable now, we've got the staff, so. Ms. Kirk has always kept this, and this is residential only. It does not include commercial. So, you know, if you were to compare the numbers, you'd see a little bit of difference between the performance indicators and these numbers, because we do tack out the commercials, 'cause they aren't part of that extension program that we offer, so. Also, just as a, things that we're doing, we've worked on several policies this month in finance. We're still working on the financials, trying to maybe have something possibly next month that they'll present to us on that. And then, the staff has met, trying to brainstorm some possible changes, and hope to maybe next week have a full report, some things that we might could implement, some changes that would be feasible. And then, I also wanted, I've got Patrice Brockton here, who's up down on stage, and we're proud to have her, 'cause she's done a really good job for us, and I just wanted to give her a few minutes to kinda give an overview. She had a meeting last Friday, overview of how things are going with her and her position.
All right, thank you, Mr. Renee.
Would you come, Patrice, please?
Over the past several weeks, I've done some research. Seems as, you know, as I stepped into the position, you know, we had a lot of things going on, and I'm grateful that, you know, the team has kept me up on the policies and procedures. Last week, on Friday, we were able to meet with a group of citizens that came to our last council meeting that had concerns about their utility bills. We did a presentation on understanding utility bills and the cost associated with energy consumption and their usage. It went, in my opinion, very well. We were able to hear the concerns of the citizens that were present, and hopefully, we can, you know, make some, some things happen from those suggestions. We, we did have a, I think, a good group that came out. Mr. Chansey was here, Mayor Thompson was here, and they asked very good questions, and we were able to give them the answers, you know, that, that we had that could help them in, you know, the situations that they're in. Hopefully, this can become a, a thing that we can do more often, having workshops and inviting the community out, so that when they have questions, we can answer those questions and hopefully help them save some money and keep some money in their pockets, and questions.
No, but I did have a comment. I do appreciate the work that you did on this meeting here, and I feel I hadn't really got a chance to talk to Matthew yet, but I really feel like there's a couple of things that we're gonna work on to help these folks, not only during the wintertime, but, you know, the summertime, too. There, there's some, some of the bills get a little high, and folks are trying to stay cool. I think we're gonna try to implement a couple of things Matthew and I talked about. We haven't addressed the council, but I, I think some things are gonna be coming to help folks, and that's, you know, it, it just takes some work to change an organization like this, and I appreciate what you did to get it started.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Renee? Okay, not, we'll be moving into the next department, soon as I can find it. Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On fire, we had two hundred and forty calls to the state. If you look at the calls, the biggest thing is just the trend that's just been trending over the last probably five years is the percentage of calls that are first responder calls to Med Assist. We run about sixty-five percent of our total call volume is in Med Assist calls. We aided Walter County Fire on eleven calls. They aided us with nine. We had a couple of public relations events, conducted three hundred and twenty-six hours of training. And that's, that's pretty much, you know, we got the trucks out there running. We had a tire-e kind of old-fashioned supplement. That was, that was a good event. I had a lot of participation. And the meal was black-eyed peas, cornbread, and ham, and it was, I enjoyed eating peas and cornbread, so that's, that's basically what I have on the fire. Opinion your questions.
Okay, no questions. We'll move into police department.
Police department had thirty-nine hundred and eighty-five calls for service, fourteen hundred and fifty-six calls to the PD, two hundred and ninety-eight court cases in the municipal court, conducted a hundred and ninety hours of training, had sixty-seven Part One crimes, a hundred and forty-eight Part Two crimes, over a hundred and one adults arrested, thirteen juveniles. Community service folks picked up thirteen hundred and twenty pounds. And that kinda wraps up the nut for the PD. Opinion your questions.
Chief, are we seeing any change in the burglaries that were going on for a while?
Our burglaries are down compared to what they were. Hopefully, and, and most of them were related back to juvenile crimes. We've still had one or two, and one of those was a non-forced entry that somebody walked in the house and took the TV out, but it wasn't a forced entry, so. But it is, the, the number of events are lower than they were in the first, first month of the year.
Good.
Any more questions, Chief Plaid?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Solid place.
Thank you, Mayor. Our numbers are a little inconsistent from now February port from January. We had some numbers that trained it downward. Our commercial waste was down. Our transfer tonnage was up. Limb pickup was, was high. We, we had a significant increase in limb pickup, and it's probably due because of cold weather. Other than that, they pretty, the other numbers are pretty, pretty much on point. I take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Still working on scrap tires?
Yes, we did get a company that matched, that matched a price that we did get a better price than what we were last year. Wanted to take them off our hands altogether. That's the goal.
Any questions, Danny? Thank you. Streets and tent transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I like the report, we've rented out the community building five times in the month to fix where, um, excuse me, our equipment, fleet management shop continues to work off of corrective and preventative maintenance work orders. Our grounds crew picked up approximately a ton and a half of litter throughout the streets. My street division, right now, thanks to some break in the weather and these, these good days we're having, we're able to get out and do some, some patching, some asphalt work, some hot mix, is being made available for the local plants, and we're, we're seeing those needs decrease in those areas. And as it, as the weather continues to progress, we'll continue with our patching and get on into our paving season. We're currently in the middle of the, continuing the expansion of Richard Parsons Drive, and we're really making some good headway on it, looking to, looking to have a base set in within probably the next two weeks of, of new expansion there. Moving into our sign and markings division, we're continuing to take care of the needs of that throughout the city, make sure we're doing proper signs, and make sure that we're following new mandates that are coming in. If you hadn't noticed, we recently striped the parking by the old courthouse. That was done, I think it was done today. And that's been an issue for us as well as PD, and we have that taken care of now, and hopefully, people that are supposed to be parking there will use those, those places instead of parking at their own free will. Other than that, we're very appreciative of the good weather and hoping it's, hoping it's holding on, so we can continue to do, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any questions, Jeremiah?
Thank you very much.
Water, sewer, gas, and storm water. Mr. Middlebrooks.
Thank you, Mayor. The water treatment, still happening about two point three a day. Water distribution, our work orders were, were up for the month of February. Service calls, emergency calls were down. Repair forty-two leaks, twenty-three meter replacements, and installed or repaired a corner and put a water bank. In the wastewater treatment side, everything still averaged two point one million down to date. The wastewater collection, our work orders were down a little. Service calls and emergency calls were down as well, and we repaired or installed two hundred and twenty-five feet of sewer line. Natural gas division, we sold sixty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four MCF of gas. Our work orders were down as well. Service calls were down. Had two leak repairs, one meter replacement, and added three new services to the system. Storm water, work orders were up a little, twenty-two service calls are down. And at the waste, at the training facility, we had six classes, eleven attended. And just to give you an update real quick on the two thousand eleven city VG is completed. They've got a little bit of punch-out work to do, and we'll be finished. Final. Any questions? I'll be more than happy to answer.
That is Walker, Walker Drive.
Walker Drive, yes.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Okay, thank y'all very much. We'll move into our committee information. Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four items on the agenda this evening. The first one being approval of vehicle use policy, Mr. Chansey.
Thank you, Mr. Agcock. If you recall, we discussed this under the Public Safety Committee last month, but what staff has done is generated a full-fledged policy for vehicle use that basically applies to the whole city. Well, the current policy that's adopted, page and a half policy, Exhibit A was not up to date as our, for our current practices. So, if you look at what's uploaded, I'll briefly touch on some, some things that we added. Basically, under the procedure, the assignment of vehicles, which is on page one, the DHs, they are responsible for that, and it puts a lot of emphasis, you know, that the DHs will be responsible for the vehicles and for the employees that drive the vehicles during work hours and the ones that are allowed to take them home and use them on a twenty-four-hour basis. Speaking of that, it, it actually, it actually addresses the IRS and how when we do assign the twenty-four-hour vehicle use, who is actually receiving that as a benefit. So, currently, we do have that list, which is reflected in Exhibit A, of who gets charged for that on their W-2, who is actually exempt, i.e. the ones that have, you know, emergency vehicles, the police. So, it addresses all of that in here, even goes into talking about the operation and maintenance of the vehicles. I know the mayor, he wanted in here about, you know, you can't smoke, chew dick, whatnot in the vehicles, so we have placed an emphasis on that. Really just saying, you know, use common sense when you, when you use city vehicles and take care of them, so. If you do, if you look at Exhibit A, and you remember back on the old Exhibit A, we only had about, I guess, eight or nine positions listed. This reflects current practice, meaning when the utilities came back up under the city, the policy was combined, so Exhibit A now currently reflects what we currently exercise. So, I can take any questions. I know that was kind of a brief overview, but, you know, if there are any questions, I can answer. Anyone happy to? About the vehicle use policy.
It looks like you covered everything that we, we discussed.
And, and again, this is, we currently practice all this, and it's just never been in writing. So, we felt like it was time to update the policy.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion from the committee.
Move to accept this policy.
In a second. Have a motion in a second. I'll play an item. Close. We'll present the biscuit pool council next week. Second item on the agenda is approval of electronic check transfer agreement. Mr. Prith.
Thank you. This agreement is just the first of what we think of, we'll need to be several agreements. Basically, we'll take the electronic bill pay that, where you go in, where you're buying now, and do a bill pay, and they will create a check, mail the check to us. Takes several days, and, and seems to take longer and longer to the post office for whatever reason, and sometimes has been an issue with being late, 'cause it'll say on there, you know, it takes three to five days, but when we track it, it really takes a lot longer than that. And what they're telling us is they will actually coordinate the two, and once we sign up for this service, they'll take, if, if I go in and tell them to pay my utility bill that way, they'll, they'll take it and just do an ACX transfer directly to us, therefore not generating the, the paper check and going through the mail and all that. They'll give us a, a list. They will not download the file, they don't have that capability, but we feel like in the long run, it'll, it'll be beneficial not to have that middle man in the post office involved in all this. But what we're asking is that you would just give us the, would make a recommendation to allow us to contract for these services, not only with this company that we've got here, but we've identified several others. We just haven't identified them all, and it seems that the different banks use different ones. So, what we're trying to do is, as they come in through the mail, we're, we're checking the, looking at those checks and trying to identify those services and getting with those companies. So, just with the attorney's approval of the contract, we'd just need permission to contract with these companies for this service. And then, we'll get Ms. Brockton to market it if necessary. You know, it may be that our customers would prefer to use electronic bill pay, maybe they're not, but of course, there's always still the, the bank draft that's available. But this, we, we're gonna buy is something that might be beneficial to the customers.
I'd just comment, Chair, that Ms. Prith and I have talked about this, 'cause I use bill pay for most of my things from my bank, and I'm wholeheartedly support this, 'cause most of the places that I use bill pay for now do take it electronically, so they don't have to cut checks, but to the city, they have to cut a check, and it does get delayed, so I'm glad to see us moving to this.
I am as well, for the same reasons. Any other discussion questions? If not, I need a motion from the committee to present this to full council.
Since I just endorsed it, I guess I'll make that motion, and we'll present it to the council for approval.
Say. Motion in a second. All in favor, I agree. Close. Motion carries. We'll present that to full council for approval next week. Third item on the agenda is approval of incident response plan for PCI compliance.
Thank you. The third and the fourth both kinda go hand in hand. We needed to adopt this PCI compliance plan because we do take credit cards. It's just part of the, the annual certification. part of the annual certification that we have to have because it's an online-based payment system. But we found in doing this, we also needed to update and do an identity to our IT policy. So we probably could just recommend that you pass both at the same time if you'd like, but they're just, so that we meet the standards and will comply with that policy and then comply.
Questions for a name? Any discussion? Let's take them one, since they're on the agenda this way, we'll take them one at a time. Need a motion for the approval of the incident response plan for PCI compliance.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Close. Motion carries. Present that to full council next Tuesday. Next item is approval for IT policy addendum for PCI compliance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, aye. Can you oppose? That motion carries, and we'll present that to full council as well next Tuesday. That concludes our items on the agenda of the safety there.
Okay. Airport have anything?
No, we don't.
All right. Public Works?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item for discussion, approval, the Georgia American Cleanup Week, April 21st through the 25th, 2014, and I'm gonna give that over to Dan.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. This is the week we participate, Earth Day is on the 22nd of April, where we participate in the Great American Cleanup, and we allow citizens within city limits to come to our transport station and bring their waste, and they can dump for free during this week. Metal, garbage, trash, scrap tires, there's a limit of 10, and they had to be less than 22 inches. But you do get, bring a limit of 10, and we will be conforming to customs on social media, Facebook, Twitter, website. If you have any questions, you can call that number, 770-266-5148. And got any questions, we'll be glad to help you. It also allows communities to get together in the neighborhood, and they got want to clean up, and give them an opportunity to just bring it, and no charge.
Yes, we did do that last year. We did get a group of citizens, and we went around the community and neighborhoods and did some cleaning up.
Yes, yes, I did.
Team, I have any more questions or anything else they'd like to hear about this Great American Cleanup Week? Seeing there are none, floor is open for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
If there are motion and second, is there a question? All in favor, aye. With that approval, we'll make that recommendation to the full council next week. That'll be all, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Utilities.
Mr. Middlebrooks, you want to give us a discussion on the MGAG Gas Portfolio Four project?
Mr. Scott Tollison's gonna take this one, he's with the Minnesota Gas Authority. Thank you for having us. I'm Scott Tollison from the Gas Authority. I want to thank you for your support and your membership. You've been a charter member of the Gas Authority since 1987, and I think you've got a hard copy of what I'm gonna talk about in front of you here. As you can see, we're talking about Portfolio Four tonight, so that may sound Greek, but it implies that we've been through one, two, and three already, and we're looking at Portfolio Four. The City of Monroe participated in one, two, and three, and we're here tonight to seek approval on Portfolio Four. If we flip the page, we can go over on the second page. We started Portfolio Three back in 2008, and it's coming to its contractual end here at the end of 2014. And what Portfolio projects allow us to do, it allows us to go out and buy natural gas on your behalf, and then we redeliver it on a month-to-month basis. We buy it in blocks of five, 10, 20 years, and then we redeliver it to the City of Monroe on a day-to-day basis, and then we bill on a monthly basis. And that's the way we operate. Portfolio Four just continues that operation, and that's what we're seeking here tonight. Portfolio One was launched 23 years ago with a very small project. Now we're up where we're buying a lot of gas for a long time, trying to make sure we're getting the best economics we can possibly get. You can see in the chart down below, there's three or four pieces of that chart there. In the biggest section down at the bottom is our portfolio returns. That's where these dollars come from, is these portfolio projects. That's where every year we come back with a rebate check on your gas purchases, and that goes into your operating, and that's where we come up with that. And over the years, Monroe has had anywhere from $150,000, $100,000, $150,000 come back from the Gas Authority on those rebates from the Gas Authority. You can see a line there that says $13.5 million. That's our corporate goal in total for the Gas Authority amongst our 78 members that we serve around Georgia and the southeast. The way we came up with that $13.5 million is we want to generate more money than you pay us. So if you pay us a dollar in overhead dollars in general administrative expenses, we want to return $3.50, and that's what this portfolio arrises to do. And that $13.5 million is the $3.50 to one that we like to have as a benchmark every year, and we deliver that on an annual basis. The other boxes are things like release capacity that you don't use. We return that, resell those to other cities and bring those dollars back to you, things like that. That's where some of the other dollars come from. If you flip over with me again, like I mentioned, this is effectively continuing Portfolio Three. The only change here is we're gonna have a 20-year maximum debt term on Portfolio Four versus 15 in Portfolio Three. We came back in 2008, amended three to give us that 15 years, but we're gonna come now. And so we may issue, we will issue debt in Portfolio Four up to December 31st, 2020. And so we've got ourselves a five-year window to issue debt, go out, prepay for the natural gas, and then redeliver it to the city. And that's what we're doing here, we're asking for that extension. The term of this matches up with your base membership contract, your long-term contract you have with the Gas Authority. There's nothing changing with that. You still have the five-year annual resigning member situation. If you decided you wanted to get out of the Gas Authority, every fifth year, you have that opportunity. Nothing changes with that contract, and so we're gonna stay with that. Some other key things that didn't change, we're still staying with that 72-month period of debt issuance, and our maximum debt will never be more than $1.5 billion. We start bumping up against that, we've gotta wait until we pay some debt off. So that's our maximum amount. The obligation share that we have is a backstop for us in case something goes wrong in the projects, and that would be where you come back and, we would come back and call the City of Monroe for a piece of the project. Currently, Monroe's share of our portfolio is about 1.1%. So you can see, you know, we're pretty diversified in our membership. And when I say diversified, Monroe is very normal for our membership, very normal size, very normal customer base, and so we think it's a very good mix of diversity in our gas mix. The only other things you'll see in the numbers is we had some members join since 2008, so we've got more members now to buy gas for, and so the numbers are gonna move around a little bit, and that's the only thing you'll see in the calculations. Same operating benefits, if you turn the page with me. You know, our goal is to have the maximum amount of gas we can have at these discounted prices, and that's what Portfolio Four will let us continue to do. We diversify our supply sources. We buy gas from about 25 different natural gas suppliers now. We also use backstops with highly rated banks to make sure we're not getting in trouble with the Wall Street types we're dealing with, and so we're making sure our credit risk is there. We deal with AA+ counterparties in all our financial acquisitions, and, you know, and then we still bill the cities all first-of-the-month gases, never any risk that your gas bill's going up from us. Whatever the market is, is what you pay the Gas Authority. And so there's never any risk there. And then all the financial benefits flow back to the members. We're a nonprofit joint action agency, and so we, anything we generate, we flow back to the members on a pro rata share basis, based on your throughput. And that's the way we generate our returns. The chart down below, you'll see our current gas supply mix. The blue section is our prepaid gas, that's what I'm talking about now. The blue and the pink is some of the things that are in Portfolio Two. As members of the Gas Authority, you actually own physical gas in the ground that we're operating and producing and flowing to you. And so you own gas all the way from the mineral rights in the ground, up through the processing, all the way through the pipelines, all the way to your wellhead. So you're very diversified, very, you know, you're back all the way into the wells, being a member of the Gas Authority. That's what that pink section is. You can see our target is to be a little more, we want to be a little more aggressive to get bigger discounts. If we're buying gas on a spot market basis, that blue piece at the very top, we're not getting discounts, and we may be paying premiums. So we're trying to shrink that part of the bar for us and make sure we're getting the cheapest gas we can possibly get and get it delivered. Over to the last page, just some things that Mr. Chancy's seen from us. It's a package with a contract, had a marked-up version that the city attorney will review. Very few changes from Portfolio Three, so the legal review should be fairly smooth. I'll be happy to answer any questions, comments.
Kind of natural gas is better bargain for Ohio, man. What's the forecast for natural gas?
We think it's very positive. We, you know, we've heard of the shale revolution we're in. We think that all those gas reserves are still out there. The issue now is how do we get them to market? Pipelines need to get built, and now we're hearing some things about we want to liquefy that gas and export it overseas. We're a little bit concerned about that. We think that we need to keep it at home and use it here at home, create jobs here, manufacturing jobs, instead of trying to get in the world market. You know, now we're producing a lot of crude oil too, but our price is directly tied to what's going on around the world, so we're paying $100 crude when we're producing a lot of crude here. And so we're a little bit concerned that natural gas being put into the world market's gonna have some upper influence on us, but thankfully, it's only gonna be a small fraction of what we're producing here in the U.S. It's interesting, if you think about the way gas flows around the country, traditionally, gases flow from the Gulf of Mexico and the Texas area, across the southeast and then up into the northeast. Now it's being produced in Pennsylvania and Ohio and being moved south. And so that's how the world's changed in about seven or eight years in the gas business. So now's a good time to be buying gas, it's pretty favorable pricing compared to historical numbers. We've seen, you know, right now we're at about $4 an MCF. We've seen $10, $12 an MCF back eight, nine years ago when hurricanes hit the Gulf and things really spiked up. We're in a good position from an energy standpoint.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there a motion from the committee or a comment from staff about the approval of...
Mr. Little, I would say that I have sent these to the attorneys, and they have put their blessing on them. Of course, I know they're not here, so we can, if we need to wait, y'all hear from Paul and Russell to approve this, we can. I mean, there has to be a resolution ready next week anyway, but we can go ahead and approve it, it's just up to you.
Is there a motion to, we approve the MGAG Gas Portfolio Four project supplemental contract?
So moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Sir.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll recommend that to council pending the final contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Middlebrooks, you've got the water meter bid results.
Yes, sir. Last Wednesday, we had a bid open on the water meter replacement to go to AMR, the automated metering. Low bid was Delta's municipal supply, $1,276,070. You'll notice that United Utilities was actually the low bid, ended up at $630 commercial meters. So when you factor all those in, that gave a little bid to Delta Municipal. So we're asking for your approval to award this contract. This is a Jeep alone, so it's not, I come out of the budget.
And this is gonna be phased in over, what's the timeline?
They're asking, well, 190 days is the timeline on the contract.
This is in the same company that did it for Atlanta, is it?
Oh, no, ma'am.
I saw it, I'm sure.
And this is the loan that we had approved at $2 million that we're never gonna be able to only use 1.2 of that.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we recommend Delta's municipal supply at 1.276 million for the residential water meter purchase and installation.
Second.
Is motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will recommend that to council. Thank you. Mr. Middlebrooks?
Yes, sir.
You can start tonight.
Two motors at the water plant. One of them's on the 500-horse river pump. This is pump, is pumping the water to the plant for treatment. And then also the 250-horse high-service pump, which is one of the pumps that we use to pump water out into the system. Both motors are needing to be rebuilt. There's two bolts there, low bid being Cardi Electric Motors of Athens, that's $29,739. Is that a big question? What next?
You did tell me that this was built in the repairs and maintenance budget for the general operating budget, right?
Correct.
Are there any questions? How often do we have to rebuild these, Tony?
The 500-horse was done about six years ago, but it was a motor and pump combination. 250-horse, I haven't seen any records on this since the plant was built, so pretty good service that bid.
It's my understanding we have, we keep two of each one of these, and that's why it's running right now. It's running on the auxiliary, okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we'll award the equipment repair to Cardi Electric Motors for the set amount.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will recommend that to council. Mr. Middlebrooks, repair the roofs.
Thank you, sir. This is to replace the roof on the wastewater treatment plant, the office building. We've practiced that roof for proof for the last four years, and last week, we had some wind, we actually had some of the roof come up, and so we're pumping by the edge of the water out of the building, so we're needing a roof replacement. What we did was look, it currently has a membrane roof on it, and so we had two membrane companies come out and give us a bid, one being at 42.8, the other one being at 29. Then we thought about the possibility of putting a gable roof on it, and then maybe put a tin roof. Felt like it would probably last a lot longer, wouldn't have this problem again with the flat, the membrane's a flat roof. So this would put some pitch on it, do away with the problem with the leaks. So when all the bids came in, the low bid was putting the gable roof on, that was for Cleveland Homes, at $15,528. Now, in order to put the gable roof on, the AC units have to be removed from the top of the building. So we had, I've only got one bid so far from the Eaton Air guys, the other two guys hadn't responded yet. But this guy come in at 7,500 to remove the two AC units and reinstall them at ground level. So the total would be $23,028 to put a gable roof, metal roof, AC units removed and put on the ground. It's gonna be about $6,000 less than the membrane roof, which only carries a 15-year warranty.
And what's the warranty on the tin roof?
Uh, 20, 25 years, I think's what they're saying.
So is it a tin or is it a form metal roof?
It'll be, it'll be the form metal. It'll be the, the three-foot wide sheets.
Right, okay.
And I think you told me, I mean, it's not a shiny metal, it'll be a gray in color almost.
Correct. And then they'll put the bottom side and then the gables. And then they'll put the bottom side and then the gates and all the tarnish to make it look like.
Are you going to get another bid on the air conditioning?
What I was going to ask you was if we could just bring up the sixty, seventy-five hundred on the AC units, I think I can get it done, but I felt like the gas prices were high.
Is it just one other supplier that you're looking at? Is it, there's two of them?
There's two other guys looking at it. I just didn't get their bid in time.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
One other question, if these other people with air conditioning hadn't submitted their bids yet and they're here this meeting tonight, I mean, they're going to be at seventy-five hundred probably, right? Stop debating on this. What would happen if we made a motion tonight to approve next week the installation of the gable roof? And then had a subsequent approval of the bid for the air conditioning? Is that, or they have to be done at the same time, I guess?
Well, the air conditioning units might have to be removed first.
First, yeah. I just have it on here.
Well, since you got two people looking at it, you know, if somebody wants the job, they're going to bid it at the price that they can do it for. If you only had one other person bidding for it, I would say that probably the price is going to come in at seventy-five hundred or seventy-four ninety-nine.
Right.
But if I got two others, that makes sense. I had, Mr. Middlebrook and I talked, I want to commend him, number one, for looking at the additional option of the gable roof versus the membrane. I think the easy way on doing these things sometimes is replace what's already left and that would have cost us considerably more money, so appreciate you taking a look at the other option. I would make the motion then that we accept the bid from Cleveland Homes for the, at fifteen-five twenty-eight and that the removal and reinstatement of the air conditioning unit be approved at a price not to exceed seventy-five, seventy-five hundred. And maybe we do this to the council next week.
Okay, so the only way they will be rewarded, this project, if it doesn't exceed?
Right.
Correct. Okay, I'll second.
There's a motion, is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We recommend that to council. Mayor, that's all we have.
Thank you. Public safety, you have anything?
No, sir, nothing, this would...
Okay, DDA?
Mayor, for the DDA, we have three people to speak on. Ms. Crosby, we'll do our normal update and then we have Ms. Anderson, the chairperson of the DDA to also like to speak to the council tonight briefly. And then following that, Mr. Richard Sales, who is president of the Monroe Art Guild, who's working with the DDA on a joint project, would also like to present to the council. So, we'll just take them in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. We have new businesses continuing to locate downtown, which is very exciting. We have the new downtown banners, the ones that say downtown Monroe. Were put up this week by Public Works, thank you. And we have a new jewelry store that's coming in. Rentz Bath has expanded and changed in a new location and we have a new restaurant, Milo's, that'll be opening soon, next to John's Supermarket. So, we're excited to see things continuing to fill up. That's a great sign for economic growth in downtown and a lot of that is made possible by sponsorship of downtown businesses. And since we're in the big sponsorship raising portion of our year, because that is how we pay for the concerts, is we raise the money to do special events like that and to do some of these projects in downtown, the businesses of Monroe and individuals of Monroe make that possible by giving above and beyond just their taxes and their fees. So, because we're in that season, we invited Lisa Anderson, who's our current DDA board chairman, to speak and share tonight about our efforts and what we're doing. So, I'm going to bring Lisa up here to share a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie. Thank you all for allowing me to be your Downtown Development Authority Chairman. I'm excited, being a small business owner in downtown, it is very exciting to see what all is going on. And we have four great committees, of course you know, that are all very active and lots of new committee members, but what I'm reporting on tonight is the organization committee and our sponsorship goals and what we've raised to date. Wes Peters cannot be here tonight, he's our chairman of that committee and he has, we have formed a great committee and we are budgeted to raise twenty-five thousand dollars this year, but our committee goal is fifty thousand. And what I wanted to report to you to date, what we have raised, with thirty-eight sponsors to date, we've raised twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And last year, we had a total of twenty-one sponsors for eighteen thousand, so through March, we have already passed the total yearly goal, what was raised last year. I know our goal was higher last year. So, I just want to let you know how active this committee is. Our goal is to have 100% participation of downtown businesses, of our downtown authority board members and you as city council members. So, if you have not been contacted to give for this sponsorship, you will be. Larry, you have given and thank you so much and others, I will be contacting you about that and I think that's all I need. Sadie, is there anything else? Okay. Any questions from you all? Thank you again for your support for downtown authority, the development authority and the Main Street program. We are really thriving and are on the map. I feel like people are coming from everywhere. As a business owner, I see the tourists coming in. Not only do our antique malls attract them, but our new businesses that are opening and restaurants that are opening. So, thank you all for your support and thank you again.
Thank you.
And we will have our first concerts before we have another council meeting. So, May 2nd is the first of the summer concert series and then that weekend, May 3rd and 4th, we're promoting antique shopping in Monroe. There's going to be an additional vintage market happening at Walton Mill and a lot of our antique dealers are working together to do special activities and events. So, if you have people that love antiques, tell them to come to Monroe that weekend. It'll be a good weekend to come.
Do you want to, the Spring Fling?
Yes.
The Spring Fling is an event that the Monroe Veterinary Clinic?
Yes, it is, it is this Sunday. Monroe Veterinary Clinic is partnering with Downtown Monroe and spade and neutering our cats and they're setting four traps, one on each corner of town and so the cats have to be brought in in one of their traps and they will spade and neuter those for free and let them back out. So, please come out. Their fundraiser is this Sunday from 12 to 3 and would love for you all to come out and support that because this is, it's a major event and help control our cat population.
Yeah, and this is just an idea of a local business of how could they help downtown and they're technically not in our downtown, but like so many businesses in Monroe, they see it as a core, a core district to improve and to invest in because it helps improve business in all of the city. Next, I want to invite Richard Sales to come up and he is also a local sculptor and this is the sculpture project that we're working on together with DDA and we have a PowerPoint presentation, but also have hard copies, so I'm going to pass these around. One is the presentation and other is an example agreement from another community that also has a sculpture project.
We've got this on the screen also, if you want to look at that. This is a joint venture between Monroe Art Guild and the DDA. We have been looking, meeting and looking for several months at the feasibility of putting some professional sculpture in the downtown area of Monroe. We were thinking of starting out fairly conservative with five to seven sculptures. They would remain in place for approximately eighteen months on a schedule from June to December of the following year and they would be replaced about every two years. So, this would allow us to have a lot of different sculptures in place. These sculptures would be leased, not bought. This would be totally dependent on funding. Brian has been working on some of the funding and we've looked at Georgia Council for the Arts and the Walton Foundation. We don't have information yet from those, but we anticipate that information to be forthcoming. We're looking from the city to possibly give us permission to place these sculptures at five to seven sites to start with. We would like you to look at the licensure agreement that we would propose to have with each sculptor and possibly to help us with some of the concrete pads and/or benches. The startup cost would be approximately a total of five thousand dollars for five sculptures. Leasing these would amount to five hundred dollars each. That would be in increments of two, two-hundred-and-fifty dollar checks, one for installation and one for removal. The other money would be in the form of awards to attract the sculptors and then we would have some administrative signage and equipment and supplies cost in the amount of nine hundred dollars. So, a total of five thousand to get started is fairly accurate. The selection process would be made from the Monroe Art Guild and the Downtown Development Authority. They would recommend sculptures that are creative, safe and interesting in either a contemporary or classical format and we would be taking much care so that the sculptures would be suitable for family viewing. I've asked Brian to look at the possible sites and he has chosen some of them. If you'd like to say something about that, Brian?
Thank you, Richard, and thank you all for giving us time to talk about these. The sites that I have selected were just a beginning, looking at what sites the city owns or the sites that the city has a good agreement with, the owners such as the Pocket Park. And when I selected these sites, I looked at what are high traffic areas, what areas would visitors who wanted to do sites one through seven, what would they be encountering, either looking at neighborhoods, looking at architectural styles, culturally significant buildings, places, sites, neighborhoods and so forth. And so, just doing some of those, I did a list of examples of if you were to walk that route, what you would encounter. Some of those would include three historic districts such as the North Broad Street Historic District, the Monroe Commercial Historic District and then the McDaniel Street Historic District. And so, if we begin with the site one, this would be at the intersection of Walton Street and Walton Circle and that's an area that a lot of people tend to show visitors or drive down, do the turnabout, but it's also a great street to show about a hundred years of historic architecture from the turn of the century, I guess nineteen hundred, to ranch homes and new construction is built on the circle. And so, that would be a great way to showcase Monroe's varied architectural styles just along that street. And then also, as they're going through, walking through various sites would be number two here at City Hall at the corner of North Broad Street and the entrance. And then also the new Pocket Park where there's already seating for people to stay and linger a little bit longer would be another site. And sites like this have been picked out so that people do see something different, it catches their eye and whether they're driving or walking, they tend to slower their pace, walk a little bit, you know, slower, take friends that they know and show them these places and begin to explore. So, of course, as the art guild, we could not be left out of that as well. So, there's two different paths that that could possibly be located at. One is the entrance of our Sculpture Garden and then the other one is where the old flag used to be.
And that's at a stoplight, so that gets even more attention, hasn't it?
Exactly, yeah. Because there's a lot of traffic that ends up stopping at the Washington-South Broad Street intersection. The fifth site is the Historic City Hall and that, there's one suggestion where there's a light shining on the building. I just thought it would be neat to showcase the artwork being highlighted by the light as well. But then also the alternate site would be a little bit farther down. If you're looking at the building, there's the historic marker and then the lower right picture shows, which would be to the right of that marker, closer to the East Church Street intersection. So, we're capturing the views of the Cotton Warehouse, East Church Streets, but then also letting people at that intersection of South Broad and East Church Street see the sculpture as well. And then also the library is another site, trying to keep that in-town walkability corridor going and having people visit on West Spring Street as well, since that's also another intersection that people are caught at the light. And then also the entrance at McDaniel Street and Pinecrest where there's the entrance to Children's Park. And so, if you do that whole circuit, which I realize I had labeled seven and six, they probably need to be interchanged and that way you can do the whole, almost a circular motion. But if you do that track, you get exposure to places such as the churches here in town, local businesses in the downtown, also national chain businesses, then sites like the Davis Edwards House, McDaniel Tischner House, and then you get a feel for the neighborhoods that even have developed in the 1950s such as the Pinecrest neighborhood that a lot of people also drive down. So, you're taking into account neighborhoods that people are visiting, stopping by, passing through, a very highly trafficked area of town, which would be Broad Street. And then exposing people, whether they only see a couple of them or make it a point to see all seven or five of them, they would get a good sense of what is going on in Monroe and they would stop and stay a little bit longer. And so, there was a quote that I had found from a Kickstarter program, which is one of the options we're looking at to fund this program. And this was done in the Sierra Arts Trails for the Sorensen Sculpture Project out in Oakhurst, California. Their goal was to raise five thousand dollars and they collected five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars by forty-one backers and this is back in October of 2012. But the quote in the video says, "Bring artwork into the public realm pulls together people from all walks of life. Public art beautifies, educates and enhances our surroundings. It's a statement indicating that a community cares about its culture. Public art is for everyone, not limited to a select few. It provides a viewer a moment for pause and reflection and enhances our hurried lives." And when I heard that, I thought that completely sums up our feeling of the sculpture project where our hope is to keep people here a little bit longer, let them explore the city and then set up shop or reside here.
We looked at four cities before proposing anything for Monroe and those cities on the screen there, seven, would you like to say something?
There's specific things I wanted to quickly showcase to each city. Swanee has done this, this is a screenshot from their website and what they've done is they do a People's Choice Award, so they're pushing everyone to their website through the public art. And so, you click on it, you can vote for their sculptures and they follow the same pattern that we're looking to implement here of having it for eighteen months, rotating it out. We'll go to the next slide. These are two sculptures that are in Swanee that we've actually been in discussion with the artist and when they're done with their run there, they would be willing for them to be moved to Monroe as part of our public art initiative because these artists are farther away and it'd be a convenience to them to just move them down the road. So, that's an example of specific ones that could be a part of our community if we do this. The next community that we are aware of is Norcross and what they've done is they've done it as an effort to showcase recycling. So, they're using, like this is a hubcap sculpture, they're using materials from the community, reusing them and the reason we know about this program is that Richard actually has had three sculptures approved to be a part of the Norcross project. So, they're doing this in Norcross and they have public art and they're emphasizing a city-supported, citizen-based committee on environmental awareness. And the next example is in Greenville, South Carolina. It's a part of a public art walk. This is all online. They have over fifty pieces of public art all throughout downtown Greenville and people can walk, get information about each of the sites and just scroll through and see all the unique features and this is more than a day trip. So, it's something every time people go and Greenville has done a lot in the past ten years to develop their downtown economically and this is a piece of it there. And then the last community that we are aware of is Kingsport, Tennessee, and this is part of their brochure for their sculpture walk. But we also have a resident of Kingsport, Dee Joseph, and she's going to share a little bit about her experience of this program in her community.
Being a resident of Kingsport, well, growing up in Kingsport, they started working on the sculpture walk about twelve years ago and it initially started down Broad Street and there was a walking trail brochure published for that purpose, which therefore brought in the families. So, they decided they would span out and they have now included sculptures further out of the downtown area, which is allowing the walkers and the runners... out of the downtown area, which is allowing the walkers and the runners by distancing themselves with markers, telling them how far they have run. But most importantly is, is that this is a huge tourism draw, and the longer people stay in your town, the more money they're going to spend, whether it's your families walking this trail, whether it's your walkers or your joggers. But more importantly, it's the tourism. And this can be done through brochures, and it's a great opportunity for the city of Monroe. Thank you.
If you have any questions, we'd be glad to try and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a clue, Dee, again?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Move on to items of discussion. How about upcoming public hearing of rezon 221 Baker Street? Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is petition number 14-00023 by Monroe Walcott Properties LLC. They're looking to rezone their property at 221 Baker Street from current zoning of V1 and R1 to a proposed zoning of planned residential district. Total acres they have, acres, and it's multifamily rental property that they're proposing put in there. The reason why they had to propose it as a PRD is because their building style exceeded the maximum number of units that could be in one building, which is eight, and so that's why they went with the PRD. We originally had a recommendation to approve the proposal as a PRD based on recommendations that the planning commission came up with. They had a forum at the last meeting, but they weren't able to get a motion passed. So there are no recommendations from the planning commission on the proposed rezon to PRD. They need all the standards of review, which are listed on the application. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Can you give us any specifics as to why you wouldn't, you didn't make any recommendations?
Well, basically, we don't have any specific proposal on the table yet to go by, and the planning commission, like I said, they had a forum, but none of the motions passed. They died for a lack of a second. So there was no, there were no parameters that were actually agreed upon at that meeting. So they forwarded it to you with no recommendation, and any parameters that you would want to put on the proposal could be added at this time.
Well, you know, we look to the planning commission, the planning committed to guide us, and...
Yes, ma'am. And Chuck Young is here with a proposal to speak to it. He could probably answer any questions you have and give you a little bit more specifics of their proposal and what they intend to do.
Yeah, they're actually going to give a presentation.
Yeah, they do have a presentation prepared.
Under items of discussion, so this is just going to come up next week for a vote from the mayor and council.
And a public hearing.
And a public hearing on the property. So, yeah, Mr. Young will give a presentation toward the end of the meeting.
So we're rezoning from R1, V1, to a PRD?
Correct. That's what they're requesting.
As a planned residential development? And there's no requirement for a variance on the road frontage? One, Baker Street has 11 feet, and the Olympian Way has 100 feet. Is that not a requirement?
That's a typo, but I think it's 114.
Oh, I thought. Okay.
My apologies for that.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure.
A little over 100 feet on Baker Street.
Okay.
Okay. Our second item of discussion will be the appointment of the Historic Preservation Commission. We're in the process of working on that now. Item three is a resolution for the MGAG voting delegate. We've not changed our voting delegate. Gillian was our voting delegate, and we'll change that to Matthew, because we'll vote on that next week. Item four is a resolution for the MGAG supplemental contract for the portfolio for project. Next item would be the resolution agreement for the GFA Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. Anybody want to say anything about that?
Mayor, that's just a resolution. This goes along with the water meters. Basically us saying that we intend to borrow not to exceed $2 million, and it's just a resolution that's required by GFA for this money.
Okay. Item six, we have a presentation of the Prestwick Company's proposed development.
Thank you all. Who's this? My name's George Baker. I appreciate you all letting us present this to you tonight. The proposal that Ms. Scott was asking questions about is a rezoning for eight and a half acres for apartments. This apartment project would be part of our mixed-use community that we're calling East Village out at the main intersection is Baker Street and Hammond Drive here. This black outline here is our property, including this eight and a half acres that fronts on Spring Street here and Baker Street over here, a little bit on Olympian. We would like to do a master plan mixed-use live-work community out here. I believe the city, through the LCI studies that y'all have done in the past, along with the urban redevelopment plan, which this property is a part of, promotes mixed use and live-work-play. Over time, some of you may know the Walton County Government Building's there, Tim Stewart Funeral Home, and the new DePex Building. So we've got some of the work in the live-work-play going. We need some of the living and the playing. And Chuck, who I'll introduce here in a second, is somebody that I've known for about eight years and I trust. We didn't just go looking for anybody. He has looked at this with me for about two years, and he finally felt like that a project could be viable here. So we've been working with Chuck on this. In fact, we had somebody who wanted to do a 55 and older community, and they wanted 50 acres, but they just, we didn't feel comfortable with them, and we just quit talks with them. The neighbors in the area have said that they're for it. As far as neighbors, I don't know if you all know, we're not putting anything that we wouldn't live next to. My parents just moved to Olympian Way, and the house they live in backs up to this project. And then I live over here across the street, so we're not building anything that we wouldn't want to be our neighbor. Also, some concerns I've heard is that Monroe has too much apartment-zoned land. And so, as a part of this, what we'd like to propose is, over here, Burt Street, 78 Cherry Hill Road, some of this land over here is zoned industrial and zoned for apartments. Since the city would, is concerned, or I don't know if it's the city, but residents are concerned about the number of apartment acres, what we would like to propose is, we've got this land that's zoned for apartments over on Burt Street, and take 64 units and rezon it to industrial, which is what's next door. That would take an unrestricted apartment zoning classification and put it into this PRD, which is a site-specific with conditions, and you know what you're getting. And so in terms of alleviating any concerns of residents or anyone that might have a concern about too much apartment-zone land in the city, we would like to propose that as well. As far as the type of project, we've had, there's a resident on Olympian Way that said their parents are going to be moving here in the next year to two years from Michigan, and this would be an excellent option for them. A resident on Pierce Street said that her sister was looking for a place to stay, and had this been here, it would have been a good option for her sister. And Sadie had mentioned to me that she had friends that wanted to move to Monroe and couldn't find a place, and that didn't know if this would be something they'd want, but would be a good option for them to have looked at. It fits in good with the adjoining uses, a good transition from commercial, many warehouses and office into residential. But I appreciate your time, and I'll let you hear from Chuck, who's actually going to build these if you all so desire.
Thanks, George, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to this group tonight. My name is Chuck Young. I am, sorry, adjust this. Or not. Alan. Chuck Young, Vice President of Development for Prestwick Companies. Prestwick, the partners of Prestwick have developed over 14,000 apartment units in the southeast. Prestwick as a company has been around since 2008. As a company, we've developed over 23 properties, over 1,400 units. We specialize in workforce, family housing, and senior housing. We, most of our properties are under 100 units in size and are right about in the 50 to 60 range. The package is being passed out today, has more information about our company, our background, as well as some of the properties that we have developed, as well as pictures of those properties, so you can see the quality. The plans you see up here tonight, there is a, excuse me, a site plan that I'll walk through in a minute, as well as images of a comparable product that we're going to, the product we're going to, like to bring to Monroe. It's also the product that we toured, and we'll show a short video of our tour momentarily. The plan itself, the main entry would be off Baker Street. There would be a clubhouse, there'll be a fitness center, a saltwater pool, a business center, and picnic pavilion, all standard, kind of Class A amenities and all things that we're doing in most of our properties today. The buildings themselves would be 50% brick, 50% hardy plank. That's what's represented in the pictures down below and pictures in your package that are both labeled in our proposal and in our Greenville, South Carolina site, Augusta Heights. The, the community would not be gated, but the clubhouse and all the amenities, the pool, fitness center, all that would be on a key fob or electronic key for all residents to use. The property is also monitored with a 32-camera security system that is running on a three-week loop that we, is standard in all of our properties. As far as ownership and management go, we are the long-term owner. We own the property for at least 15 years due to our, the way we finance our deals, and many times we'll end up owning it longer than that. Regarding management, we have a third-party management company that manages property for us. They have offices within the community center, and they would be there full-time. Last week, we dragged Patrick up to Greenville to see our Augusta Heights property, and I'd love to take a quick minute and kind of show you the video from that tour in an effort to, the property's four years old, and I think what I wanted to demonstrate was our ability to maintain a beautiful property over time. Some of the concerns we'd heard previously from some folks were that, what is this property going to look like as it ages? And I hope this demonstrates that we do need to take care of our properties. Apologies for the shaky camera work. Within the clubhouse is your leasing, your business, your community room, flat-screen This is our back-room office, as well as our command center for the security. This is actually a community center at a similar property nearby in Greenville called Parkside. We showed it just because it's a bigger space, and that's the kind of space we would design for this particular property.
You do all the furnishing?
Yes, ma'am. We're the same interior designer that works on every property. Here you'll see open-air interior corridors, so folks will enter from two main access points. And typical unit, black appliances, bar-top counters, brushed nickel lighting package, as well as hardwood floors. This is the backside of our property. This would, this is the identical architecture that we're proposing for the site. This property in Greenville, we actually bought from a neighboring church, and the partnership's worked out really well. Many folks that live at our property attend the church next door. Mr. Baker had to get some screen time. This is the other project, Parkside, that's about four miles from the other one, and that's, you know, where all the amenities are concentrated in one area with a little green space. I thought it was important to show that concept with the picnic pavilion and playground and everything brought together. Now, that, that property and every property we've developed since 2008 is funded through the federal and state tax credit programs. It helps us pay for roughly 75% of our development cost. In return for those tax credits, which we are awarded by the state of Georgia, the property is income restricted to folks that make 60% of area meeting income, which basically means folks that make between, call it low 20s to low to mid $30,000 a year, end up being the primary renters for the property. In the, in your package here that we handed out on pages nine, 10, and 11, you'll see an overview of the folks that we are serving with our housing in Greenville at our two properties. You see roughly 37% of them are seniors, are folks that are on disability, and the remaining percentage is folks that work for the city of Greenville, the county, schools, let's see, various banks, various retail establishments, Coca-Cola, charter, library system, the colleges. New to me, there's somebody that works at another apartment complex, so they actually chose to come live with us instead of where they work, so we're very proud of our product and are excited about what we can potentially do for you guys and for the city. We also thank that with many new jobs that are being announced for the area, and things happening in Monroe, that this housing can serve a niche for folks that can... for folks that can, you know, have these great entry-level jobs that just quite, that aren't ready to buy a home yet. One of our partners' jokes that we have, that our program is really a homeownership incubator, and we have plenty of folks that have graduated on to, to buy homes within the community that they've rented in. That concludes my presentation on this.
What's the, what would the rent be, the rent?
The rents, right now we're projecting $600 for a one-bedroom, $700 for a two, and about $7.75, $7.85 right in there beginning for a three-bedroom.
Would you touch again, what are the income limitations that you have?
Sure. We are, the tax credit program requires, or puts a ceiling on the rents you can charge. And those ceilings are based on 60% of area median income, and their HUD issues a percentages, they publish them every year, and they do it by bedroom size. And so basically, the, the income caps, the caps end up being, depending on the unit and bedroom size, and the, I think there's a breakdown here on page eight. The max income for a one-person household, $27,900. Two-person, $31, close to $32. A three-person, close to $36, and a four-person, close to $40. And that's the ceiling. The minimum would be two and a half times whatever the rent is. And I've estimated that below, on the line below. So your one-person households can make between 20 and 27. Two-person, 20, also 20, and 31. Minimum of 25, close to 26 for the three- and four-bedroom, the three- and four-person households.
So if I'm a teacher, I'm young, I'm coming to the area to teach, I'm single, and I want to secure a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. My income is $38,000. I would not qualify for this unit.
That's correct.
And they would be the very ones who would take it?
That's right.
Yeah, now, I will say as HUD, because of the 2008 recession, incomes have come down quite a bit. So as incomes increase, our rent ceiling and our income limits increase.
But probably not $10,000.
And you can, you know, you can see from the breakdown at our South Carolina deal, which has very similar numbers, that, you know, while we don't have teachers, we do have plenty of other folks that work in the community. Every person that lives in our community either has a job in that income range or is on some kind of social security or disability. And again, about a third of them are, just over a third of them are seniors.
And the mentioning of all the different types of employers, and teachers are one of them, we didn't realize the law, public schools of Walton County, their income is actually higher than what we expected in living above a teacher's worth there. And in some areas, it fits, yeah, Walton County didn't because of the beginning of starting pay.
And while I wish they were eligible to live at our property, I'm also, I'm glad they're making as much as they can, so.
And there's some, there, there's positions all over, you know. The new jobs for Hitachi, Tucker Gore, I talked with Shane Short. He said when he was up there in Commerce, that was a big issue. When you had somebody come and they have 1,000 new jobs, the employer would say, where are all of these people going to take these jobs? So Hitachi fits it. There's lots of different employers.
I'd like to add that at the end of our 15-year ownership period, should there be a demand, should the rents justify lifting the regulations, we have the opportunity to do that. So it does not have to remain at these income levels forever. If the market dictated it, they would. But at the end of 15 years, they can, we can rent them for as much as we need to.
So what if you got a two-income home? The wife makes $20,000 and the husband gets $25,000. They don't qualify for this. And what, if they're senior citizens, drawing social security or disability and need something like this, they wouldn't be eligible for this.
I think we have, and it's demonstrated on the Greenville sites, we have plenty of seniors that live at our properties. The two-income household, making that kind of money, yes, they make too much to live at our particular property. We find that we have single parents with children and, you know, stay-at-home moms and all that. I'll also add that once, once you're in the unit for a year, if you, if, say, the husband works, the wife does not, or vice versa, and after a year, that other person starts working, they're allowed to remain in that unit, that you just have to satisfy that income requirement for one year. You have to make enough to continue to pay the rent. If you couldn't do that, you wouldn't be able to renew your lease. But there's no, the tax credit program does not penalize folks and kick them out if they happen to increase their income. It's just what, kind of what they come in at.
Have you made a presentation here before?
I have not.
I know about five or six years ago, someone came before us with a presentation similar to this.
Now, the DCA tax credit program is a competitive process, so it's not uncommon for some groups to kind of hope they'll get selected for their credit program and go ahead and go through this process. We only go after deals that we know will score with the state agency. We have a 1,000% batting average on our applications to the state of Georgia since 2008.
I think the one that you might be referring to is probably the Skyline Trace one that was done on Rich Road.
Right.
Yeah, it did develop.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is the Walton Behavioral Health Facility.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll touch on that. Next week, we're going to have Stacy York, who is VP of U.S. Health Fest, and they have submitted a certificate of need. They have submitted a certificate of need to the state, and they are wanting to put a 70-bed acute-care psychiatric facility. The location is going to be out next to the government center, is what they're proposing. They, I spoke with Ms. York two weeks ago, and again, she will be here next week to make a formal presentation. They're asking for a letter of support. But they have 100 days from two weeks ago to seek letters of support. You know, again, she can, she'll be able to tell you a whole lot more, you know, about it. There is uploaded, you will find what she did send me. So, again, 70-bed acute-care facility, I believe is around a $7 to $8 million investment. So it'd be obviously a brand-new facility. There is one in Noonan, Georgia, but I believe they occupy just an older hospital that we found out this afternoon. So they are making their way down to this area. They see a need, they go in to actually talk about the counties that they would serve, and would be all the surrounding counties, plus an additional two or three on the outskirts of that. But if you had any questions beforehand, please email me so I can get in touch with her, so she can be prepared to answer anything that is connected to them.
I'm looking forward to their presentation, I will say. Being retired from the healthcare field, I understand the need for behavioral health facilities in this area, and I would look forward to that presentation and hope to be able to hold on to support.
Okay, we have one item requiring action tonight, is the clarification and the change of the digital set-top rates.
Yes, sir. Mayor Johnson, we're going to make this as brief as possible. Because I'm going to debate it up.
Yeah, we're going to use this as an opportunity to both talk about the clarification and change in the rate, but also to show or debut this platform to the media, the public, the people that are here, the people that are watching. So let me select this on the correct input. It's on ESPN Gymnastics. But what you'll see here is, this is the product we want to showcase, that people have been asking for a long time for us to keep up with technology. The people are wanting interaction from the home. They are wanting the ability to record standard-def high-definition programming, the DVR, that's what you've heard people inquire about. So we've been working on this product. We have it. It's ready to go. It's finished. We're selling it as of tomorrow morning, hopefully. As long as we pass these rates and we're sure on what's going on with that. But I wanted to touch on just a few things, and I'll be brief, since I'm going last. Just to show that this is the basic interface, the user interface, the guide that people get by pressing the guide button on their remote control. It lists all the programming. Many of you have seen this. This goes out for 10 days. There's a day button on this remote control, and I can skip forward. There's Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays programming, and I can go out for 10 days. I can set up to record programming, both standard-def high-definition. I took, earlier I recorded some programming, so I could just show the people here. There's a list button on the remote control. If I hit list, there's two programs that were recorded. I can select either one. I can play. And there, it's going to go start into the program right there. So it allows you the ability to watch back the recorded content, put TV on your schedule. But if I go back to live television, it also allows you the opportunity to pause live television. That's been the thing that a lot of people have wanted for several years. So we have that. The thing with the rates, Brian and I both are going to talk about the rates. There are some things that need to be clarifying and defining. The rate was passed last year for digital, $66.10. And if you look at the document that you have in front of you, that hasn't changed. And that also comes with one high-definition set-top box. There was no rate discussed for the DVR. That was listed here at $71.10, and it's $5 above the $66.10 that we would charge for the digital rate. It lists the fees for the DVR, $9.95 a month, the HD box, $6.95, and then the standard-def box. If someone has an older television in their home, we have a solution for that as well. They can still get all the digital channels. I will say for the people that are here, the digital channels, what you get above and beyond what you normally get for the $50 and change a month is you get about 40 to 50 unique channels that you would not get just through the regular expanded basic, about 40 channels. Plus the premiums, there is, if you're an HBO subscriber, we have HBO, Cinemax, Showtime on our network now. We carry the main anchor channel for each one of those services. If you switch to the digital platform and you're an HBO subscriber, you'll get 10 HBO channels, HBO Two, HBO East, HBO West, HBO, all kind of stuff. Cinemax is about seven or eight channels. Showtime is about 11. So there's a much more product offering for you. And that's at the same amount of money that you were paying us for HBO previously.
There's also two other premium channels available that are not available in the standard, the Starz and iPod.
Right, right. So trip charges, installation, are outlined there. We try to be flexible with the customer, allowing them to pick up the equipment. It substantially lowers the installation charge. If they have a problem, we'll have to go out, and at that point, we can add the $50 for the trip charge to the home. But if there's any other questions, anything I didn't cover, Brian was talking about.
The one thing I want to cover is, the one thing that I never get to cover is the lower end of a price of a product. We had, we had set a deposit, if required, at around 300. That was the cost of the box. We have sourced the same capable box for half the price. So we wanted to lower that DVR deposit, if required, down to $140.
Just a quick clarification. If a person wants to put one DVR box in with their digital TV, the box is $5 per month.
In addition, yes, to the digital cable package that is $66.10? Yes, sir, it's $71.10.
They get the digital package, which was already $66.10, and they want to add the DVR to it. It's $5 per month.
Yes, sir.
Plus the deposit, is that correct?
If it's required.
If it's required.
Okay.
That is basically based on the same way we require deposits on our, all our, each other.
Okay. Good.
I'll be speaking, we hopefully are going to move forward on these pricing, and then we can move forward on getting this out of the covers.
Thank you.
Man, I'd like to just commend Brian and David. I mean, this has been a project, I know, that's been on the table for a while, and we've worked through the past couple of years, just issues, not really on our end, but, well, some, but on things that we really couldn't control.
Not going to let it all get off of me.
But, you know, this is us, this is our efforts of keeping up with Comcast that has millions of customers, the DirecTVs, the Dish Networks. And as you can see, the pricing here is, you know, very, very competitive, if not very cheap, pricing for our customers. So it offers all the DVR options, like they want over the movie channel. So just another product that, you know, that we feel comfortable with and feel proud of.
One thing to add to that, we will be coming back to you at some future date to add more HD channels. I know that's one thing people wanted, that it would be only for customers of this product, and not be any more monthly fee to that customer. But we've got some hardware costs that we've got to figure out where to get that money. David, Matt, I've had some discussions on that. And we're going to have some more discussions, and hopefully very soon, to be able to add. Because I think there'd be a big value added to this product, if I could add another 20 to 30 HP, uh, high-definition channels to the product.
I have probably been the most vocal critic to Brian and to David, because they kept my phone calls on the regular basis and complained about things. But I'd like to commend them also, because I have had opportunities to test it and see this product work, and it's worked like a charm. I had TiVo before, and this surpasses what TiVo did, so it's a very good product.
Any more questions? Comments? Dave, not? We'll have to send that motion.
Do we have, we have the city day here? Do we need to announce that? Isn't it this month?
We will. Let's vote on this, and then we'll.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to vote on this, I found it.
I'll make that motion the other way down to the legislature.
Second. Motion, have a second, if I'm Mr. Blue. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
And this will be on sale starting?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
We will, we will start advertising it soon. We will let it, we've got some customers that have been after us forever for this product, and we will start addressing those customers shortly, you know, whoever else comes in. But we're going to, it's going to be a work in progress on the process of getting the customer in, getting that happening. We've got some staff pulled aside to try to do these installs, to get this stuff done in a timely manner. But yeah, starting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
The Georgia Cities Week, we generally have a.
Sadie, you want to touch on that? I know we moved, kind of, we had two functions going on at the same time.
We would combine that with the Super Summer Kids Activity Fair, and so we've shifted that to May 10th in conjunction with the farmer's market opening. And so it's on a Saturday, and we're going to try to make it a bigger event. And we have some local churches that are partnering, so it should be better for families. So we're going to move it to May 10th. Thanks for having me.
You said there are three things happening that day? Georgia Cities, farmer's market.
Georgia Cities is actually in April still. And there is an essay contest at the middle school that's part of that. So this is not a part of Georgia Cities anymore. Now it's part of the farmer's market opening. And there's a big event that First Name Methods Church does at the same time, so we're going to work with them.
Are these local churches just within the city or within Walton County?
Within the city. Anyone's welcome to participate in the event. Actually, anyone who has a kids' activity for the summer, if you're a nonprofit, it's free for you to register and set up a booth to advertise activities for Walton County children during the summer. All that information's on the Monroe Downtown website.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we know what the business needs, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Mount, second by.
Second.
Mr. Richardson, all.
Mr. Richardson, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I really enjoyed that.